I know, I was just gonna tell them.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Mashpee Board of Selectmen's Monday meeting, June 5th, 2017. I'd like to start off the meeting by putting the regions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Tom? Microphone.
And if you could just give me a moment of silence for those who protect our freedoms during these troubling times. First move, if we can get a motion and the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
I make a motion, we approve the following: May 15th, 2017, regular session and Monday, May 22nd, 2017, regular session and executive session.
Second.
Okay, guess we're all in favor, roll call.
Yep.
Yes.
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 Okay, approved. We do have one public comment. We have David Still II from the Cape Cod Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board. My name is David Still. I'm the communications coordinator for the Cape Cod Commission, and I'm here on behalf of the commission to extend an invitation to our One Cape Summit. It's June 22nd and 23rd. That's a Thursday and a Friday. You should have received invitations already, and will be following up with emails and probably calls as well. But if you're familiar with our One Cape Summit, the first day is going to follow pretty much as it has been in the past. We'll have updates on the water quality management plan for Cape Cod. Secretary of Energy and Environment, Matthew Eaton, and interim Region One Administrator, Deb Zarro, are confirmed as keynote speakers for that first day. And we'll be talking a little bit about advances to the technology matrix and alternatives. That evening, the Cape Cod Selectmen and Councilors Association will convene a meeting, and that's an opportunity for, or be part of, the summit as well. That's an opportunity for all of the elected leaders across the Cape to come together in one room, hear from the same people, ask questions, and hear the same answers all at the same time. This is the third year that we've done that, and that's been a successful part of past summits. On the second day, we're changing it up a little bit. We're adding some broader regional issues such as housing. We'll have the release of our Housing Market Analysis, which has been ongoing since January. We've had a couple of sets of regional meetings on that, and that should be pretty interesting. We have some different demographic information that runs a little counter to what's been heard about Cape population and the like. But we'll also be talking about other issues that are important to our regional policy plan update, such as infrastructure, regional planning for infrastructure. The registrat-- it's a free summit. Registration is open. The public is invited as well. CapeCodCommission.org/OneCape will bring you in for registration. And thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
That's how they can think of it, you know?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Six-party public hearing, do you want to hold off on that, or?
It's too soon. Why don't you get C. out of here?
Yeah.
There you go. I like that idea. Come on up. Do you want us to just?
I'll make a motion, we approve the two one-day licenses for June 24th, 2017, July 29th, 2017, Mashpee Whampanoag Rod and Gun Club.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
You are welcome. You always do a good job. At least you show up, right? So many others don't. I guess it is. Thank you.
Suzie.
All right, Dave Yer is a no-show. He has a medical emergency that he attend to.
Freedom Rose.
And Jane, do you want to, June, do you want to come up? Freedom Rose. We may also renewal of license to enter the use of real property, Freedom Rose, Cape Cod.
This is just a renewal of what we've already given you, right?
Is it exactly?
You don't have to give us any big things.
Just an update? Well, would you like to give us an update for just on where you are now?
Sure, sure, yes. We're in year number two, season two of our program. We have on the books approximately 30 military veterans, disabled, able, and those who are adapted, all under the adapted parents category, that are with our program. We are just getting ready to complete the winter training program at the Gascanti Center in the mountains. We do indoor urban, indoor rowing. And I have the whalerd that we purchased last summer that is getting ready to get on the water, hopefully at John's Pond, going in for a tune-up, and will be all set hopefully by mid-June to be on the water and have a full season there.
That sounds like great. I'm glad that happened for you. Really, yeah.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
I just ask a quick question. DPW and REC suggested that the storage structures be reconstructed. I guess you had some damage?
We did.
Have you seen the conditions they suggested?
I took photos today, actually, and I consulted with Nossett Rowing in Harwich, and it's a simple fix.
Okay.
It is a post skewer, I don't know what you call it. It's a post--
Just anchor it.
--that you screw into the ground and use boat straps and strap the side brackets into the ground. And so I have already prepared to do that before--
We can do a subject two, can't we?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just do a couple of recommendations in the memo, that's all. I make a motion, we approve the license as recommended with the conditions in the memo from Christine.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you again. And we have one more, and if you could put along his race wire for signage.
Good to see you guys again. You all remember me. My name's Colin Henry. I'm here with Ray Swire. I'm working with Peter Myrna on the beach and back this upcoming Sunday. And I'm here, hopefully this sign is approved. So to give you a little background, you know, obviously each one of these, pretty basic, you know, they all look exactly like this except with a different number of miles, and that's really it. Obviously, one per mile, and that's it. Those are set, probably about two to three feet off the side of the road, depending on where it is, you know, whether we have access to grass or not. They could be further back than that. These turn arrows, 17 turns in the course, they'll be in each one of them. I can get you more specific locations if you need. But these are basically fastened to white barricades. So they are, barricades are dropped Saturday afternoon, probably around four, so from there we go around, fastening each turn arrow and kind of putting them in location from there. They're all off the road, you know, so it wouldn't affect traffic in any way or anything like that, so we'll make sure of that. They're gagging there. Set up mile markers, and also turn arrows are set up Saturday afternoon, removed right after the race, probably around even on Sunday. You have to answer any questions, though.
I think that's good.
I make a motion, we approve the permit for signage for the race course.
Second.
Yes, I'm in favor of that.
Yes.
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 Good luck.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Hope the weather's good for you.
I know, I figured so. Thanks, guys. All right, we have a public hearing at--
Did we get the Mashpee Church all the way on as we did all of these?
Yeah, we might as well. I didn't see anybody here, so that's why I wasn't pushing it, but--
Well, the Mashpee Church did call us, and I told them seven o'clock because I was wondering, so I don't know if you want to wait for them or not.
Yeah, we'll leave it open.
Okay. So the public hearing for the alterations of the premises--
Want me to read it?
Yes.
Pursued to the Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Board of Selectmen acting as the license authority for the town of Mashpee will conduct a public hearing on an application of New Seaberry Resources Management, doing business as "The Lor," 236 Shore Drive, Mashpee, for alterations of the premises. Said hearing will be held Monday, June 5th, 2017, at 6:40 in the Warquay Meeting Room at Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., per order of Andrew Gottlieb, John Cahalan, Thomas O'Hara, John Cotton, and myself, Carol Sherman.
Mr. Mills.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, town manager Colin, other distinguished members. I represent New Seaberry-- I represent New Seaberry Resources Management, Inc. Where here with me this evening is the general manager, Paul Cruzel. We're here, as a result of an alteration of the premises, we're seeking to have the liquor license description amended to include those two portions of the structure. As you may know, a second floor has been added on to the facility. There's 706 square feet of interior space and 525 feet of exterior decking on the second floor. Also, a lift has been added for handicap access to the second floor, access to the main level and go over to the second story. As you approach the building from the parking lot, there's a new means of egress primarily. You could access it, but we're going to use it for additional egress from the second story. So when you see the front of the structure, you see a large staircase in the front, and that's really going to be the egress from the second floor. And there's been also added a handicap ramp that goes down to the beach. So those are these essential alterations of the premises. We're also here because the offices and directors have been changed, substituted, and SWEAC has been added as the vice president, secretary and director of the corporation, and Zavin Aurelian, both of whom are current employees of New Seaberry, has been added as the vice president and president. If you have any questions concerning any aspect of it, we'd be glad to answer.
The only question I had, I looked at it, is the, as I look at this picture here, and it shows, I think that's the ramp to the beach, and it shows stairs at the end. Are those stairs, are those stairs, or is that a ramp that continues to the sand?
There's, oh, there's stairs that go down to the beach that were there. We added a handicap ramp.
Can I come to the mic?
Oh.
You have to come to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Two, I thought you were making it was me, okay.
We added, the stairs are just in place where they were before, and then over to the left of the stairs, there's a handicap ramp that we added going to the beach.
I do have a question. Does the liquor license cover the walking out to the beach or just in the premises?
No, it does not.
It does not, okay.
Just in the structure itself.
Just in the structure, okay.
For the Lor.
For the Lor, right.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve the licenses requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Now we need us some good weather, some sunshine, right?
Thank you.
We didn't do any, the correspondence commu-- communications. Carol, do you have any?
Actually, I do. Over the weekend, I had a few calls about signs, and all the signs that were all over Mashpee pertained nothing to Mashpee. It was to other towns. So apparently we need to step up and start enforcing our sign law. There was one particular one that had a large sign and five little ones in front of it advertising the same event. They, I don't think they ever came before us unless they came to the--
They did not.
--building department. Okay.
There was a lot more than one sign.
There was a lot more. I don't want to single anyone out, but this weekend was the worst that I've ever seen it. I don't know, we need to have someone special to enforce it on the weekends, or I don't know how to present, to stop this.
Do we, do we have an enforcement agent on this?
Not on the weekends.
Not on the weekends.
During the weekday, it is the building department. I know that he has made some adjustments in the past and worked some weekends when there's a specific problem.
It was terrible this week.
It was the worst.
I am not disagreeing.
Yeah, they were everywhere.
So we will address it with staff and report back.
What about DPW? Do we have anybody on DPW during the weekend on, you know, for rubbish, picking up rubbish at--
On call?
Typically, no.
No? Nothing?
Do everybody--
Typically, no. There may be an occasion or two when they're addressing an item at the beach.
I'm also going to have Mary Lou from the chamber put out, but it's not our businesses that are doing it. It's other events that are happening in other towns, and they're putting their signs in our town.
I did notice that. They weren't local businesses.
Not one, not a one.
The budding towns, right?
Not a one was for Mashpee.
Our businesses within our town lines obey the rules.
Obey the rules and come in for permits, and everybody else did not.
I guess we're gonna have to come up with a plan on that one, just to--
We're gonna have to be a little more stricter.
Right, and it's always the same time of year, soon as the summer.
It's ten weeks of summer.
Right.
I wonder if DPW, when this, when they also have their extra help, summer help on or whatnot, if they--
Yeah, but they're not, they're not on the weekends.
Why can't we put them on the weekends if we're hiring someone?
You've made me aware of the problem. Let us take care of it.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, we have community rating systems, preliminary results letter, verification report.
The only thing that made me think of, was at the last Selectmen's Association meeting, there was an interesting report done by some folks at Province Town Center for Coastal Studies, where they were able to run a model for Province Town, where they were able to look at points of vulnerability for flooding. So they were able to do this complex topographic mapping and then raise sea level under storm conditions and see where the water entered downtown. And then, in this example, Province Town built up an artificial dune at the weak point, and it prevents flooding. And this thing put me in mind that, you know, it's a sort of a risk analysis, and it might be useful if we would ask them to come in and at least look at what it might take to look at storm vulnerability in the southern part of town and see if there's some things we can do to limit people's vulnerability to flooding. I don't, you know, it might take a while for them to come up with a study proposal, and obviously we have to fund it at Spring Town meeting, but, you know, it potentially save people some money on their insurance and save us from some catastrophic flooding problems. So I don't know if the board's interested in looking at that issue. If it is so, I can ask the guys to come in and do an assessment, see what it would cost to do it. Well, you smirk it.
What, what is the cost?
I don't know. I don't know. But, you know, if we've all got property at risk, public and private, it might be worth doing.
Absolutely.
I don't know what it would cost.
We're talking about the community rating system that we just had completed, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so we went from a 10 to an 8 in this last assessment, so that dropped it by 10%--
Right.
--to the homeowner. They indicated that the best we could possibly do is a 7, and that there's no one on Cape that is at a 7 currently. So I--
But even if it doesn't help with the insurance, if we could prevent stuff from getting flooded--
I just--
--raising some low-lying spots, it's worth knowing.
Yes, I was just making sure you were aware of that, that's all.
Fair enough.
And I would be remiss, Mr. Chair, if I didn't compliment Clay, because he was the one that actually brought this together, and it is going to save some people some money.
It's always nice to hear. So often goes the other way.
I just want to give credit where credit is, though. He took the initiative on this.
I have one thing in communications and correspondence--
As do I.
Tomorrow, tomorrow evening, our Substance Use Task Force, their big night they have, and their drop-in night at the Cape Cod Community Health on, what is the street is that?
It's a commercial, isn't it?
Commercial, the same street that Roach Brothers is on, where they're having at least a dozen different agencies that deal with substance use. This is kind of an informational meeting if someone wants to find out about getting treatment or what's available to them, whether it be the person themselves or people associated with the person, people there. Invited to stop by tomorrow night. It'll be one every month.
I thought it was nice they did a robo-call tonight--
I got that, too.
--to all the Mashpee residents, getting the call to come 6 to 8.
Right.
Is it 6 to 8 or 4 to 8?
I think it was 6 to 8.
6 to 8?
Could be 4 to 8. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. But I thought that was good.
It's a great use.
4 to 8.
It's 4 to 8.
It is 4 to 8. It's a good use of that, that system, actually.
You have something?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, you want me to make a motion to open?
I would just like to follow up to our last session. I do have correspondence that has been prepared for your review relative to the tribe discussion that we had. So I would like to, because we just received it today and because it's time-sensitive, I'd ask that it be put on the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion and put it on the agenda this evening.
All right, I'm in favor of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
With the board's approval, we would put this on letterhead tomorrow for your signature.
I have no problem with it.
Basically, just for, people might be concerned what it is. It's a letter from the Board of Selectmen with the terms of our agreement with the tribe--
Just a reaffirmant.
Taking their reaffirmant to that their land goes into trust.
The chair's middle initial is wrong. We'll correct that.
And there's a typo, second to last line, back page, basis, should be basis.
Good catch.
For corporate rights.
I make a motion that we send the letter.
My second.
You read it.
Yep, and everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
Yes. Good, I'm glad that worked out. All right, I think we skipped a little bit, and I think we had the abatement application for abatements and the road betterment tax. Number 65 Willand Road, 97 Sunset Strip, and 26 Jonas Drive. We were able to come up, we talked to the town council, and the town council has basically sent us information, and I'm going to read exactly what it says so that, in regards to an abatement, this is on a road betterment, there's an improvement to the road. The statement is, "A hardship of property owners, financial or otherwise, is not a statutory basis upon which an abatement of a betterment assessment can be based. It would have to be some established irregularity in the betterment assessment scheme or justify, to justify an abatement." Basically, a hardship of this sort would not allow us to be able to grant or even entertain the motion for an betterment or--
Chair, I make a motion, we reject the betterment request based on the fact that we have no statutory basis to issue it.
Second.
All three.
Yep, and all in favor, votes roll call?
Yes.
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 All right, we have a correspondence from Mashpee Constable Association, Inc. In regards to House Bill 2252. So I don't know if I'm going to read this.
Right, is there an issue with constables?
No, I'm not.
It's just affirming our own policy.
Well, no, they're asking us to, I mean, it's a bill to get, basically change the system.
Right.
Does the system work for you?
Essentially, we have a policy. I have a copy of it here, and it's based on our population, and we're a couple down.
I know, I'm just saying--
Makes no difference to me, but we do have a couple that have waited quite a while.
No, I was asking about--
You're talking about--
About the legislation.
The legislation, it makes no difference to me.
All right, so it's solving a problem that doesn't exist in your experience?
Well--
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue our policy for constable.
As it exists?
As it exists. Couldn't think of a word, thank you. Which gives us room also to appoint people, right?
Right.
So we can add if necessary.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're actually giving you an updated version tonight of that, John.
Yeah.
A second.
Second?
Do you have a second on that? All right, great. So, all in favor on that?
Yes, we're going to stay--
We're jumping around a little bit.
Are we?
Yeah. Because initially, this Constable Association asked us for a letter opposing a piece of legislation that would basically change the existing constable system.
I make a motion, we take no stand.
I can live with that. Second.
Yes.
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 Yes, and then my motion for keeping our policy as it stands.
Amended policy.
Yeah.
Is this amended?
As it exists.
No, it's not.
Wait, is this amended?
We have an amended policy that we--
Yes.
--presented to you tonight. It's policy number 30.
Oh, I haven't even seen this.
Yeah.
It's in our--
So I'd make a motion, we adopt the amended policy.
Yeah, it's the same one as we have, the 8, right?
It has changed.
It has changed.
The number two?
Not the, I think it's, the number is still 8.
Okay.
But the policy itself has tweaked a little bit from the original policy 30 that you approved.
I just was under the impression we had decided that we were going to keep the same one.
Same number now we were going to keep.
So where did we tweak it, then?
I'd like to make, I think we should hold this off the next meeting. I'll read this.
This is the existing.
Shelby--
So nothing's really changed.
Wait a minute. Yeah, quite a bit. It looks like it has.
Yeah, it has.
So you made it a three-year term, not a not-to-exceed term.
Right.
Is that the only major change? Three-year term?
As I recall.
Okay.
Well, if that's all--
But hold on a second.
I don't, I think that's all we changed.
That's it.
Okay, that's--
That's the only change.
That's not--
I make a motion, we adopt this, the amended policy 30.
A second.
Okay, have already, roll call on that?
Yep.
Yes.
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 Now the next thing is to appoint.
We approve the policy 30, okay. Okay. New business?
We have the applications for appointment.
Make a motion, we appoint Mark Horan and.
I have one question.
Okay.
On the second constable. Oh, he does have a Mashpee address, okay.
They both are Mashpee residents, and the only reason why those names are before you is because they have waited the longest, as far as the, the existing list.
But they're qualified. It's not just they've been around long enough.
Yes.
Okay.
Just because they're.
So I make a motion, we appoint Mark Horan and Charles Tuit?
Tuit.
Tuit.
Second.
As constables.
Second.
Okay, Roko?
Yes.
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 And lastly, I have the review of selectman liaison assignments. I'm not quite sure, I, initially I thought that it would make sense for everything to say that, I don't know if anybody's looking to move around at all.
The only thing I would change, so, is, you know, I was on Native American Affairs as chair, I don't know whether that should move, or whether, you know, whether you want to, not looking to get rid of it, but given the policy we had of chair-to-chair contact.
Right.
I think it makes sense for you to take that.
Okay, I, I get, I get, and I wasn't quite sure about that, you know, liaison or.
I'll do it any way you want.
Chair.
But.
We've always had two.
I've always had two.
We've always had two, I forgot.
Right.
Right.
And if, my only thought of keeping it with you and, and whoever else you designated is to avoid quorum issues, because if the two liaisons and you as chair are present, then we have a quorum issue.
So, so in other words, I saw, I know what you're saying, now we have three, if I, if I show up as the chair, it gives us, gives us the third.
Right, it creates a problem.
Yeah.
Potentially.
So, with that being said, then that probably makes sense that I should take the other Native, Native American Affairs for myself. And I know, John, you've been on it quite, quite, quite a while, and I know I'd like to have your, your history with it as well. So why don't we swap that, I'll, I'll take the Native American Affairs from Cahalan, myself. And everything else look pretty good, Andrew, your?
I'm fine, I mean, this is your call, I'll do whatever you want.
Right, no, I, but, but that's all right, I mean, I don't know.
I know, I'm just saying.
You know, if you're comfortable, unless someone wants to.
You could give me CPC, take it away from Carol.
No.
She gives away plenty of money.
Boy, I, yeah.
Couldn't even get away from her, and I was chair.
I, we do have, have some discussion about CPC.
We, we, I would agree, because it's, I thought long-term we were looking possibly to withdraw from the.
That's coming up.
Two thousand and twenty?
Two thousand and twenty, it's time to start talking about it, because you got to let the present members know that the money isn't going to be flowing.
Right.
Right, if that's our intention.
I don't know, we should talk about it.
Right, exactly.
That's what I'm saying, we should talk about it.
Right, we got to establish a plan, if, if that's our goal.
I would suggest we not take a vote on this, just to keep it clean within the policy that's chair's discretion, but I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing it forward.
All right, so we'll keep the liaison, it says, uh, just changed, and everything else I think is fine.
So this list is good?
Yeah, with the exception of Native American Affairs, from Andrew to, to me.
No, I got that.
Yep, that's it.
Other than that?
Yeah, I think everything else is fine. I, I heard no.
So do we want to do, are we doing this master list of appointments tonight, too?
Wait a minute, we got, we got a stop here, I'm looking at Military Civilian Advisory Council, I'm no longer on that.
Cotton is.
Right.
Okay, so we'll just move that down to John Cotton.
John's been on that, he, he took that position.
Yeah, this, this list is from last June, and it doesn't.
I have a conflict on Wednesdays at Assembly of Delegates.
So that moves to Selectman Cotton, Military Civilian Advisory Council, correct?
He's on it now, we just didn't update this list.
Right. Is he too loaded, is he too, too heavy? Historic schools, not just his library.
I'll take water, I'll take Water District if you think he's too loaded, because I deal with them anyway.
You should have it, yeah.
Yeah. You should.
Yes, do you want to, do you want to do that? I just think he's, he's taught, he's, he's, he's got a full calendar, I mean, obviously.
Water District.
All right, so why don't we swap that, the Water District to Andrew as well? And I think everything else looks pretty, pretty good. The building committee, I've, I've never even been involved, I've never, in EDIC, I, I don't know.
Do you still want to be the liaison to EDIC? I have a, I got a letter, somebody wants to be involved with EDIC, that our next meeting will, will happen.
Well, let's leave a selectman on EDIC.
Right. Right.
Right, but Tom is the liaison.
Yep, you're on Public Works, Carol?
Yes.
Am I correct?
Oh, and you're on it, so just make Carol the EDIC liaison. Liaison.
I can be both, I can be government and liaison.
Yes.
Okay, that's good then.
Efficient.
Yeah, that's fine.
I also don't see capital on it, Mr. Chair.
You don't see capital?
That was Selectman Cotton.
That was, I think, through.
Yeah, but that will be a selectman anyways, won't it?
I think we did it here.
Did we do it on there?
Nope, we did not do it here.
I didn't think so.
I can do that again if you want.
And I know that's by bylaw, is it the chair by bylaw? I'm trying to recall.
No, it's, but it's always been the selectman.
The selectman. Right.
Isn't it your appointment?
No.
No?
I, I think it's by bylaw. Um, I'm the chair, but there's a selectman on it.
There's always been a selectman on it.
And I just didn't see it listed.
And I think there's always, there's always been Finance Committee on it, too.
Yes, that's by bylaw.
Yeah.
I just didn't see the selectman listed here.
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah, well, Andrew, you were, weren't you?
Yep.
Yep.
Well, these don't take a vote anyways, the chairman can.
Right.
You can adjust these later, why don't we do that, why don't we, um, take a better look at this, and change a few of them as it is, we'll tighten that up this week, that makes sense?
Yep.
The meeting schedule, um, anybody taking the time to look at it?
It's fine by me.
It's fine by me also.
Yeah.
Plenty of notice, I can.
Yep.
Yeah, we can change.
No, I'm saying, plenty of notice, I can adjust everything else around that.
Right, exactly, okay, fine with that.
What about this master list of appointments? We, is this just for review tonight? In the packet? Everything expires June thirtieth?
Do we know if that's up to date, usually we get it for review to.
Right, so this is a review copy?
Yeah.
Okay, can you, um, I resign as the Cape Cod Light Compact Representative, so.
That comes up on the number.
Yeah, I know, but it's, but I'm listed here.
Yeah, I know.
Hold on a second, Cape Cod.
I, I might be in front either, which one?
Both.
Oh, all right.
Both.
Is there still two, or is there one now?
There will be two until June thirtieth.
Okay.
So, the, for next year, it should be listed as Cape Cod Light Compact Joint Powers Entity.
Okay, so that's what you need.
And right now, it's Wayne as my, as the alternate for the next month, unless he draws the short straw for next year.
Let's leave it that way.
I did all the hard work for you, though, Wayne.
I appreciate it. Cape Light, uh, Compact, Joint?
Cape Cod Light Compact Joint Powers Entity. Rolls off the tongue.
Yeah.
So should we take this up, can, do we know that everybody who's listed on here wants to stay?
I cannot confirm that.
Can we, for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Well, Frank Lord isn't here any longer.
Yeah, I mean, there's some obvious ones on here that jump off the page.
That's why, that's why you review them, and hopefully between the hours we can.
I don't think she'll be, you know.
Also, my name isn't down here on the Special Event Committee.
Well, that's an oversight.
It is.
This special event. Anyway, so maybe we could just go through this this week and get revised, and, uh, suggestions, Christine.
Yeah.
Primary purpose of distributing this is for you to look at it and review it, and then point out, point out these flaws.
You know, is there any committees in here we can do away with?
Yes.
Well, Mashpee Cares, Mashpee Cares has changed.
Right.
Yeah, so we can do away with that.
They got that all listed here.
Yeah. And.
Affirmative Action Committee, we haven't.
Right, and we should ask the School Committee for a new Planning and Construction Committee rep, since their rep is no longer on the committee.
Yep, that's another bylaw.
Right, so they need to.
So, does the, just out Mashpee Cares, does that exist?
No.
Hmm?
Mashpee Cares?
No, that's what he's just saying, that's, it exists under the new name. What they were doing is now the Substance Use Committee.
I'm, I'm not aware of any Mashpee Cares formation at this point, or continued meetings.
We need to look at that. Again, I'm here, MMI representative, and I'd be off of that as well. Again, that's John Cotton, who decided to have one, all the military base.
I'll make your notes in the next meeting, we'll.
Right, we'll clean it up.
Yeah. Waterways question, there's more than one person.
I know, it's right down there, yeah.
There's a whole bunch missing there.
See that, Waterways.
They might have staggered terms.
No, they have sta, yeah, that's what I think it is.
That one, yes, okay. All right, so, next meeting.
Yep, so that's off the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, and I guess we jump down to discussion on the town's right to purchase income-restricted property at Thirty-seventh Center Street.
I believe the town manager has something on that.
Okay, Rod?
Yes, I do. Somewhere.
Basically, I could tell you what it is, because you mentioned it to me. It's not our preview, again, it's the zoning board.
Right.
But I think we ought to write a letter, I have a real problem with this, it's like, you know, you build a, you build a development with forty B, you get credit for more density.
Thank you, yeah.
Somebody buys the house with a restriction on it.
Yeah.
And then says, "I don't want to live with the restrictions," and you lose the affordability of it.
I agree.
What's the point?
Right.
So.
It sets a terrible precedent.
Terrible precedent. So, it's, it's abundantly clear when you go to purchase the house, that you're limited in your ability to.
I make a motion that we send a letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals stating our feeling on it.
I agree, I second that.
I think that makes sense.
What, what you're going on, though, today is to.
Would decline.
First refusal.
We'd decline our right for first, for, to, I would amend John's motion to, to decline our right to purchase the property, and to convey our sentiments that this is bad for affordable housing in Mashpee, and we would recommend that they not approve it.
And according to council, the board should not address the request for modification, they should merely exercise their right of first refusal.
Yeah, but we can send a letter.
Oh, you can do whatever you want.
Yes.
I'm just repeating what council said.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, some motions made, is that okay?
Second.
Second, all right, and on the table, Roko?
Yes.
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 Can you keep an eye on when this goes before ZBA and let us know?
The twenty-eighth, I believe.
Twenty-eighth of this month?
I, I do remember in the past that one of these units had gone to foreclosure some time ago, and it, and it fell out of a.
Foreville, that's what happens when it goes foreclosure.
Just wipe.
We have no choice.
No choice whatsoever.
But this.
From what I understand on this one, you guys, this particular one is not, and affordable housing, it's not counted, it's a, what do they call it?
Moderate.
Moderate income, so it doesn't count on our affordable housing, just so you're aware of that, so.
I just don't even like the precedent of changing the.
I don't either.
Either way, John, I just want to make sure you're informed on what it is, that's all.
We'll make sure that you're aware of the date in front of the.
You know, the whole premise that anybody with any income can buy a restricted income, a restricted house, it's absurd, because it doesn't, it's not reserved for people with income limits.
Right.
So, the whole, it's.
Right, for it to fall out of that category and then become a market value.
Right, or even if it stays in the category, anybody can buy it, you don't have to be of moderate income means in order to buy it, there's no litmus test. It all does is limit the appreciation you can realize when you sell the house.
Right.
Already heard my, that's my second forty B rant today. I already heard the first one.
Heard the first one.
Never gets old, does it?
All right, and we have an acceptance of resignation for the council of aging, C. Ernest Cronellison, Cronellison.
I'll make a motion, we accept Mr. Cronellison's resignation from the council on aging with regret.
With regret, I second, at least, I'm glad he's still going to volunteer, though, that's nice, we could send a letter.
Yes, always, yes, a letter, and, yeah, can I get a roll call on that, Spoh?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we accept the resignation of Calliope Egloff, effective June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, from the Board of Health, in appreciation.
Second on that, Carol?
With regret, yes.
Second.
Yes.
All right, Roko? Yes?
The paper.
Yes. Also a letter.
Yeah, she did a great job, she was there for a while.
Yes, she did.
How many years was she there, does anybody know? I'd say seven, eight years.
At least, because she's been on it since I've been on the board, so it's going on age.
Good job.
I will make a motion, we accept the resignation from the ADA Committee for Michelle Brady, with appreciation and regret.
Yes, second.
Okay, and a roll call on that?
Yes.
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 She was good on that.
Absolutely, we're, we're losing a lot of the people. It's, uh, it's hard to filter the shoes. Them and I, we have acceptance of resignation, as members at Mass Representative, Cape Light Compact, J. Joint Powers, and Master Andrew Gottlieb.
Yeah, my new employer has asked me not to. Represent. Remain any county-related appointments.
So moved.
No regrets.
No regrets.
I'm with congratulations.
We don't need to send a la, letter, we'll shake his hand.
Yeah, I don't need no stinking letter.
And we need a roll call on that.
We'll save the paper.
Yes.
Three of yes, John?
Yes.
All right.
Wayne doesn't get a vote.
You want a letter?
I don't want a letter.
Is it three, nothing, with an abstain? Three, nothing, with an M stand?
No, I'm not standing. Yeah, I'll vote, it doesn't matter, it's a town thing.
Well, the next one is good, we've got somebody already for the Board of Health.
And we need an approval for appointment?
Make a motion, we approve the appointment of Laurel Almquist to the Board of Health.
I second that.
Do we have a term? I mean, what were we appointed to, the unexpired term of, we've got two, two openings.
We have two vacancies.
Of the two?
I would suggest that you do the longer of the two, and I'm trying to figure out which one that is. That I'll verify, but right now, without this appointment from the board, we've got no quorum.
Right, so I'll make a motion.
And we did advertise in April.
Longer of the two term.
And we advertised in January.
It's a good per, good candidate.
Yeah.
Great, great to hear, good job. All right, and that, we need a roll call on that as well?
Yes.
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 Four zero. Perfect, perfect. All right, we have additional topics.
Wait, we skipped over the special events for the church.
Oh, the church.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
They didn't come in.
No, they did talk to me.
They get special dispensation.
They do.
I'm sure I flipped over the page as well.
I make a motion, we approve holding Sunday church services at the Mashpee Community Park, June eleventh, July ninth, and August thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, from ten thirty to twelve thirty P.M., ten thirty A.M. to twelve thirty P.M.
I second.
We all want an agreement on that?
It's subject to the conditions laid out in the bylaw letter.
The only thing I don't see is they don't say anything about their signs.
I was just going to say, does this include signs?
There's no signs on the permit, and the only thing I'm concerned with, if they do have signs, are they going up now and staying till August thirteenth?
How about if they do have signs, is it be limited, be limited to twenty-four hours prior to the?
I don't think that's what your policy says.
Our policy says seven days.
Seven days?
Before and twenty-four hours after.
Fine.
Okay.
Conditional upon.
Condition upon consistency with the policy.
Yes.
Okay. Then I second that, thank you.
Okay, so we have second, so we need a roll call on that as well?
Yes.
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 All right, and we just filled out, additional topics, but if any, nothing that I can think of. Andrew?
I have none.
I'm good.
Carol?
I'm good right now.
John?
No.
To make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Yes, yep.
Yes.
Awesome.